Hi, good evening. I'm Kalamazoo Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain and welcome to tonight's Kalamazoo City Commission Meeting of July 20th, 2020. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on the city's Facebook page and the city's YouTube channel. And you can also listen on your phone by calling area code 269-552-6425 and entering meeting ID number 935-5966-6038 when prompted. And you may also leave a three-minute public comment for tonight's meeting by calling area code 269-226-6573. And I'd like to turn tonight's meeting over to Kalamazoo Mayor David Anderson.
Thank you so much Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, the new and recurring voice of the City Commission now that we are on Zoom meetings. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, July 20th, 2020 City Commission Meeting. This is a public meeting via Zoom. First thing I would like to do is call this meeting to order and Clerk, will you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here.
Commissioner Hess.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Urban.
Here.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Thank you so much Clerk Orley. For our opening ceremony, we have the invocation by Dr. Kadeep Sudheel. Doctor.
Thank you Mayor Anderson and thank you all City Council members. It's my great pleasure and privilege to be here for the second time to offer the invocation prayers for the Kalamazoo City Leadership Meeting. Our Hindu scriptures have a large number of peace invocations that are chanted at the beginning of dialogue between a guru, a preceptor, and his shisho, a disciple, to create a tranquil atmosphere conducive to scripture studies. I was searching through these invocations appropriate for today's meeting. Our great American family is going through a turmoil at this time and is searching for answers to many questions that we are facing. Physical afflictions caused by virus, social tensions caused by unacceptable behavior on the part of some, and the economic difficulties as a result of them. The invocations that I have selected for today are the same as I used last time because it turns out that they are the most appropriate for this time and for this occasion. These are from the two Vedas, Veda means knowledge, Atharvaved and the Krishna branch of Jajurved. Two of the most ancient of the Hindu scriptures along with the Rigved and Samved. I'll recite these in the original Sanskrit language, the language of our gods, and then give an essential translation, not necessarily a word to a translation of these verses in English. Om. Badrakarne Vishnu Yama Deva. Badrampashyem Akshabhirya Jatraha. Stirai Rangai Stushtvansastanubhir Vashema Deva Hitamnyadayuhu. Swastina Indro Vriddha Shrawaha. Swastinah Pooja Vishva Veda. Swastinastarkshyo Arishthanemi. Swastino Bruhaspatirdhatu. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Oh gods, maybe hear with our ears what is auspicious. Oh wonderful ones, maybe with our eyes see what is auspicious. Maybe leave the entire length of our allotted life, heal and hearty, offering our praises unto thee. May Indra, the king of gods, the ancient and the famous, Ushan, the sun god, the all-knowing, and Yu, the lord of swift motion, who saves us from all harm, and Brahaspati, the guru of gods, who protects the spiritual wealth in us, bless us with the intellectual strength to understand the scriptures and the heroic heart to follow the teachings. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahano Bhunattu Sahaviyam Karavahay. Tejasvinamathita Mastu Mahavishavaay. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Let him protect us both. May he bless us with the bliss of knowledge. Let us exert together. May what we study be studied well. Maybe not hate each other, maybe not quarrel with each other. And the final verse is a prayer and a wish for the well-being of the entire mankind. Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha Sarve Santuni Ramaya. Sarve Badraanipasyantu Ma Kashit Dukkha Bhavet. May everybody be happy. May everybody be free from disease. May everyone experience good fortune. May they never have to face sorrow. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. May peace be always with us all. Shatishaha Dhanyal. Thank you very much. I really, really appreciate this opportunity. Namaskar.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sudheel. Well, tonight Commissioners, we have three proclamations. I've asked one to be added here at the last minute. The first proclamation is for the League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area. So this is the 100th anniversary of the amendment which occurred, started the work obviously 100 years ago as far as our right to vote. So the League of Women Voters was formed almost concurrent with that action, and that is the proclamation that we have here tonight. That is going to be read by Commissioner Hess and we have Fran Eckenrode here from the League of Women Voters.
Thank you Mayor Anderson. It's indeed my pleasure to read this because I renewed my membership today. The League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area 100th anniversary. Whereas on July 20th, 1920, local women, women who had been involved in the suffrage movement organized the Kalamazoo League of Women Voters for the stated purpose of furthering the political education of the newly enfranchised women. And whereas the League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, influences public policy through education and advocacy. And whereas the League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area enters its second 100 years as a strong advocate for voter education, voting rights, and voter protections. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Kalamazoo area publishes its signature voter guide, now available online at www.vot411.org, which contains nonpartisan information about political races in the upcoming election. And whereas the League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area conducts candidate forums and issue education programs as well as an award-winning program in Kalamazoo high schools to educate junior and senior students on voting. And whereas the League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area is focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion as it moves forward in the next 100 years of empowering voters, defending democracy. The League welcomes men and women members with different skills, viewpoints, and backgrounds. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission, I, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, do hereby congratulate League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area on this 100th anniversary and express my gratitude for its contributions to the Kalamazoo community. Signed, David F. Anderson, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm Fran Eckenrode. I'm a co-president of the Kalamazoo Area League of Women Voters. I want to thank Mayor Anderson and all of the Commissioners for recognizing this event. This day is actually the 100th birthday of the Kalamazoo League, July 20th. So thank you for having your meeting today so that we can celebrate with you. The League was founded by, the League of Women Voters of the Kalamazoo area was founded by Kalamazoo women with the purpose to educate the new voters who had just received the right to vote and to increase the participation of those women in the political process. So as you said, the League is nonpartisan. We do not support parties or candidates. We do support issues after we do a careful study. So we primarily advocate for voter education, voter rights, and voter protection. So you see us around the community registering voters, doing candidate forums, doing our high school education program. And I, and people probably know us best for the signature voter guide. And I think it's really great that we have worked for the last few years to put that online as vot411.org because in this current COVID pandemic environment, it's a great place to get voter information without exposing yourself to other people or other people exposing themselves to you. So thanks so much for celebrating with us. The League looks forward to the next 100 years in the Kalamazoo area of empowering voters and defending democracy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eckenrode. I appreciate you being here and all the work that the League is doing every single year. Really appreciate that a lot.
Thanks.
Our next proclamation is the National Summer Learning Day. And I believe that Stacy Jackson is here from KidNet to accept that, and Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin is going to be reading that proclamation.
Yes, and excited to do so. Summer is not canceled. Even in the midst of a health pandemic, summer is bursting with possibilities for all students to grow, learn, and thrive. High-quality summer learning and enrichment opportunities will be more important than ever in 2020. Across the country, summer programs are adapting and innovating to ensure children and their families can access quality summer learning opportunities and critical supports and services through the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, Summer Learning Day is a time to reflect on the importance of keeping youth learning, safe, and healthy every summer, ensuring they return to school in the fall ready to succeed in the year ahead. And whereas, it is still a role for summer youth employment programs to engage older youth, whether virtual or in person, with the support of business and community leaders. Our youth can learn, gain real-world experience, contribute to their community and economy, and experience safer environments through summer jobs, internships, and/or volunteering opportunities. And whereas, the largest-ever summer learning study conducted by the Rand Corporation found that it was clear that low-income students experienced more setbacks over the summer compared to their wealthier peers. And whereas, summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic and social emotional growth, keep children safe and healthy during the summer, and send young people back to school ready to learn. And whereas, a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of youth through summer programming. And whereas, summer learning is a critical component of our collective effort to ensure all students graduate from high school prepared for college, careers, and life. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, we do hereby proclaim July 23rd, 2020, as Summer Learning Day in Kalamazoo and do commend this observance to all of our citizens.
All right. Thank you Vice Mayor Griffin. Thank you Mayor Anderson and Commission for having us and for supporting high-quality summer learning for Kalamazoo youth. For the past five years, the Kalamazoo Youth Development Network has hosted this annual event that highlights the importance and impact of summer learning. This year would be live streaming because that's, that's our way, right? That's what we're going to do. On July 23rd from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the four City of Kalamazoo Parks and Recreation Summer Campsites. So we got DJ Boogie. We're going to have a party. We're going to have our mask and sanitizer, and we are going to celebrate this National Day of Summer Learning. The purpose is this, is to shine a light of the importance of summer learning. And so please let me know, stacy@kidnet.org if you're interested in joining us in person or virtually via Zoom to participate and to make it happen. We know that learning doesn't end at the last school bell rings. In fact, we don't, there wasn't even a bell this year when it ended, right? And so this year, more than ever, we understand that so much of what we learn occurs outside of school. The out-of-school time sector provides high-quality summer learning opportunities to all Kalamazoo youth to address both the summer and the COVID-19 slide. When youth participate in high-quality summer programs, we reduce opportunity disparities and disparities in educational outcomes, which is something that we all share as a goal. So thank you again for supporting summer learning. Come party with us. We're going to be turning up in the park, Mill Street, Mayor's Riverfront Park. We'll be turning up there all day. Well, not really from 1:00 to 3:00. Hope to see you there, S-T-A-C-Y@kidnet.org if you'd like to participate. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson, for being here with us. I appreciate that. Thanks for your work. And please communicate back to everyone at KidNet. We really appreciate the work that KidNet's doing. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Have a, have a safe evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
So I was, I added a proclamation here which I'm going to read, and I had an honor today. And that is to be with a young man who was a, grew up in Kalamazoo, graduated from Kalamazoo Central, participated in a whole variety of sports at Kalamazoo Central, including a football. Someone who's really become somewhat of a national figure lately. I'm thinking many, many people have seen the video of him in Phoenix running and catching a young person who in a very, very desperate situation had been pushed off their third-floor balcony because of there was a horrific fire occurring in their apartment. He caught that young person. So he was here in town. There is an intention to set up a scholarship in his name, which is related to each one of our three high schools. There's people that are working on that right now. Actually, there was supposed to be a golf tournament yesterday to raise money for that, and that was canceled due to the, the fact that it didn't seem safe in this time to have a golf tournament. But I did get to meet him, a very powerful person and very genuine. So I appreciate that. So this is the proclamation honoring Philip Arthur Banks. Philip Arthur Banks was born and raised in Kalamazoo, a 2010 graduate of Kalamazoo Central High School. Philip played baseball, basketball, and football as a wide receiver. Philip lettered in football and was the defensive team MVP and all-conference selection. And whereas Philip attended Kalamazoo Valley Community College prior to serving four years in the United States Marine Corps, where he did tour, two tours around the world. Philip's experience in the Marines had an impact on his perception in life. And whereas on July 3rd, 2020, Philip's Marine Corps training and expertise on the football field proved to be paramount in the selfless act to help save a young boy from a burning building. And whereas Philip did not hesitate to assist his new community in Phoenix, acting swiftly to protect and save lives when he heard desperate calls for help. Philip was the right person, at the right place, at the right time, and will forever be connected with the Long family. Now, therefore, I, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, am grateful to honor Philip Arthur Blanks for his noble act in protecting lives and thank him for his service to the nation. I want to recognize that great people come from Kalamazoo and they may end up other places. I asked him, when I met him this morning, to consider always that he, to come back to Kalamazoo and he'd be welcome here. So we'll see what happens with that. He is here momentarily. You can see. So thank, yeah. All right, we are through our proclamations. Now we have, let me see here. All right, Commissioners, we have before us the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes you'd like to see this nice meeting agenda? Okay, see none. Next item is communications. Are there any communications, Manager Ritzba?
Yes, Your Honor, this evening I would like to have Attorney Clyde Robinson and Dora La Bonner, our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Rebecca Kick, our Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, provide a brief presentation on the Chapter 18 Civil Rights Ordinances and the Chapter 18A Fair Housing Ordinance. And we'd like to present these tonight and with the idea that we will be bringing them forward in August for approval. So I'll turn it over to Rebecca Kick.
Thank you, Manager Ritzba.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We presented back in February, can you believe it? It's been a really long time since that work session that we held when we talked about Chapter 18. And Director Bonner and myself have been extremely busy since then, making calls and meeting with many people and meeting with Attorney Robinson and talking through the changes that we're going to present tonight with the Chapter 18 ordinance. The work that we are presenting are based on so many conversations that happened a year ago and that have happened within the last few months. I'm going to share my screen. If I could get permission or have someone share the presentation that we have for the Commission tonight. Okay. To the beginning. Okay, so tonight, each one of us is going to present a piece of this ordinance to you. And the first part, we're going to present to you the changes to the ordinance. One of the biggest changes that Attorney Robinson is going to talk to you about is that we have separated it into two different documents now. It is not all in the Chapter 18 Civil Rights chapter. We've broken out a Chapter 18A, which will be known as the Fair Housing Ordinance. Secondly, I'm going to go over some overview of additions and changes that we heard through our conversation. Thirdly, we will cover the Civil Rights Board and the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and their role in that. And lastly, we will cover the next steps that staff will plan to cover this month and next month. So Attorney Robinson, I will turn it over to you to discuss the organization of the document.
Thank you, Rebecca. As was indicated, we took that rather large ordinance that tried to address everything and broke it up into, I think, more easily digestible pieces. So the first Chapter 18 will be a general prohibition on discrimination. Then Chapter 18A works hand in glove with Chapter 18, but focuses just on housing area and discrimination, housing transactions. So while two separate chapters, they will be tie-barred and they refer to one another. So both ordinances have to be adopted for either one to become effective. Hopefully, this will make both compliance and utilization of these two ordinances a little more easier for landlords, tenants, and staff. In terms of what changes were made, as Rebecca has already indicated, there were a lot of comments and they were reviewed. And then as based upon that, there were some, I won't say we've made every change that was requested, but they were considered. And there were some critiques that we heard that did lead to changes. I can't tell you exactly what those were because there were a lot of comments, but they were all reviewed with an eye toward, does this work in the ordinance or not? And can, does it help the ordinance achieve what it is that we're looking for? In breaking it apart, I made the decision to look at other models and see what other communities were doing. And I focused on those, the similar ordinances, both in Grand Rapids and in Ann Arbor. The reason for that is they are communities that are in a lot of ways similar to Kalamazoo. They have a diverse community. They are progressive communities. They both have a significant amount of student housing. And so for that reason, they were viewed as, as good models to follow. And so with, with that, we, I took a look at those ordinances and where, again, they had similar language, but I thought perhaps their turn of phrase would, would benefit what we were attempting to do. I made those changes as well. So in a nutshell, that is the way I proceeded in making the changes and, if I will, bifurcating the fair housing aspect from the general prohibitions on discrimination.
So I'm going to briefly go over the additions and changes that also occurred within just, really mostly the Chapter 18A Fair Housing Ordinance. So if you were present at any of our past presentations or presentations that our partners also gave, you will have seen this slide before, and all of this is still incorporated into the ordinance. So even though it's been separated out and into its own chapter, we want you to know that the, the start and the integrity of the original ordinance is still there. We still have the protections through source of income and status of a domestic violence victim. We still have the creation of the Civil Rights Board and protection against, you know, exorbitant application fees. We also want you to know, like back when we were still doing this presentation, how we were strengthening enforcement for gender identity and sexual orientation. Of course, there's been the court ruling on June 15th, which again has greater protections, but now that strengthens our local protections as well, and now it, that lies within the state. Next, to talk to you about the community engagement that we were able to review, looking at the feedback, the listening sessions, the emails that we received, so many phone calls and Zoom interviews that Director Bonner and I were part of. The organization of the document became a big part of that. So many times we were hearing that there just needed to be more clarity. We need more clarity on this document and more clarity on what it is and how you're going to enforce it. And so just splitting the document into two pieces was a lot of, of what we believe will help assist with the implementation of that fair housing chapter and really clarifying the language. Next, expanded definitions were given, not because this really got rooted in tenant rights and rentals, but discrimination goes so much further than that in terms of what we've heard in our listening sessions. We've expanded that to include the sale, exchange. We've expanded that to include the sale, exchange, rental, or lease of real property. Next, the terms on evictions and convictions were referred to in the past ordinance as blanket policy restrictions. We got a lot of feedback about what does it mean to have a blanket policy. These are now further clarified in the new Chapter 18A to assist with the understanding and considerations that need to be adhered to. The language was also used in some of those other model ordinances that Attorney Robinson covered from Ann Arbor and Grand Rapids as well. We also wanted to clarify arrest and conviction statements. Particularly, the questions that we had were more about, can a landlord consider criminal conduct occurring on the premises of the landlord's property regardless of whether that conduct resulted in a conviction? And so we worked really hard to be able to clarify exactly what we mean in terms of what we're asking for in the conviction statements. And the last two, including income verification and protection of source of income, is a critical component to this ordinance. Based on the other model ordinances, the income verification also included utilities within their income qualifications. So we have modified the language to include utility payments within the income verification. Lastly, in Chapter 18, the reporting timeframe was 180 days in the original Chapter 18 Civil Rights Ordinance. And we were asked to consider a shorter timeline for that, and the timeframe has been reduced to 91 days. And that is in the Chapter 18 portion, where it also shows the process for filing a complaint as well. And I'm going to hand it over to Director Bonner to discuss the Civil Rights Board and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office role.
Thank you, Director Kick. Even though, next, you can go to the next slide. The ordinance has been separated into two different documents. All of the reports and the complaints all come to the Chapter 18 Civil Rights. And it will be handled through the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office. The purpose of the board is to exercise its authority and functions and powers to help us foster mutual understanding and respect between the city and discourage unlawful discrimination. They will review the claims of discrimination after the investigations are completed, review and analyze conditions, practices, and policies, and other factors that will contribute to discriminatory practices, make recommendations to the Commission City Managers on ways to improve city programs, and really importantly, engage in public awareness building to ensure that residents are informed of their local protections and the role of the board, and as well as issuing annual reports to the city. The DEI office capacity now, so we all know that this has been an interesting journey for me as the new director. I started in February and then went into seclusion with the rest of us. And life has been very interesting and the work has been unfolding. But we have the commitment from leadership, from the city manager, that as we grow and the needs expand, that we will have to have folks to work with us in this department. So we are aware of that and continually evaluate what's going on, how much we have to do, and how much, who we need to help to get it done. I will say that I'm working with some other organizations for training because we have to, we will be responsible for the investigations. We will be responsible for helping report out to the, with the board. And so we know that we, this office has, was always important, but now we are learning just how important diversity, equity, and inclusion is in all aspects of the city. And when it comes to partners, there's in the city and the state, because we are adding protected classes, we will not be, it's not necessary for us to investigate federal and state protected classes. So we will be working with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and our own local Fair Housing Center of Southwest Michigan. And then we will also work with them, as I said earlier, I'm talking to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and some other entities now on training and how to set up our office to make sure that we have the capacity to do what it is we need to do to make this and all of our DEI work successful. Next slide. And so this is the complaint process. The person who feels that they're being discriminated with can file a complaint with the city. The city review the complaint with the city attorney, the manager. And from that point, we decide, is this something, is it one of our new protected classes? And who needs, or is it an existing protected class that could be handled by state and federal? If it's local, then the city manager will assign investigation to the appropriate department. And we will go through a conciliation, we'll work with them, and see if between, if we can voluntarily, with those involved, resolve it. And after that's resolved, the city manager will get written notice of the results. But the goal is to make sure that we can manage it voluntarily. But if it is not voluntarily, then the city attorney would decide if there should be further legal action taken. Next slide.
Next back to Director Kick.
Thank you. So I can't stress enough how important it has been for the city to get to this point with the ordinance. Having it brought through this incredible grassroots initiative led by our Vice Mayor and TRHT and Isaac. And it's now in this space, coming back into the community. And more importantly than ever, we need to be able to look at all of our partnerships and this incredible housing ecosystem that works with our most vulnerable populations. The city is not a housing organization. We support all of these different housing organizations through our federal funds, through ordinances like Chapter 18, and through other organizational support. And so this is why it's so critical now that we think of our partnerships and the ordinance now coming together at this critical juncture. Because we are all part of this ecosystem. Landlords and tenants still need assistance communicating, educating, and building relationships with one another. And that is a huge part of so many of the incredible resources and organizations that we have in the city of Kalamazoo. Everyone is involved in providing housing. We are all part of that quilt, that puzzle, that big piece that needs to come together. And understanding where we came from and all of the voices that we have heard along in this journey is so incredibly important as we think about how we heal our future and how we move forward with this ordinance. Again, together as an ecosystem, all of us providing housing, providing resources, and providing all of the wraparound that everyone on this journey needs. So I want to be able to give you all the next steps that are going to happen with all of the community conversations going forward now that we have given you where we are now. This document is still in draft form. And so the community conversations that we tried to hold off for a little while, hoping that we were going to be able to be face to face, and that's not going to be possible, but this work still needs to be done. And so what we're going to do is we're going to have four different forums. And two of those are going to be very landlord specific. One of those is going to be Housing Support and Partners, and those are going to be by invite. The August 10th Community Facebook Town Hall is going to be a lot like the Adult Use Marijuana Question and Answer Session Panel. Going to have the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner Urban. And we are going to have a great conversation as a panel and be able to cover all the aspects of the ordinance together. Then we will bring those to Commission Hearings. We really hope to bring that to you on August the 17th for the first reading, and then for a public hearing on September the 7th. So tonight, we are going to get everything posted up online for the community so that we can start getting your feedback on our online documents, where we would typically have them available at libraries and neighborhood associations. We, of course, will be able to find out, you know, if anyone is available to house the document so that it can be accessible to the public. I will make sure that you have my email address so that I can find out where to drop documents off if that's possible. But these will be on the front page. You'll have Chapter 18 and Chapter 18A, as well as this PowerPoint presentation. And we also have the past PowerPoint presentation and given by Vice Mayor Griffin, Dr. Charley Davis from Isaac, and Shalana Lewis from TRHT. And that is still an incredible wealth of information. So if you have not seen that PowerPoint as well, I encourage you to please view that. And if you have any questions, I thank you so much again for your time.
Commissioners, questions? All right, thank you so much, Directors Kick and Bonner and Attorney Robinson. Anything else, City Manager Ritzma?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, appreciate it. One thing I do want to note and reinforce is there are many more opportunities for input and discussion and listening. And there will be the Facebook workshop that's coming up as well. So any particular details or questions, there'll be more opportunities to delve into that. So even though slightly, yes, Commissioner Hess.
So will the Facebook events and everything be live on our Facebook page? And we'll be able to access all that through the city's webpage as well?
Director Kick? I see your head nodding.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Hess, we will have all of those available. And we're going to be, we've got the dates. And so we'll make sure those are widely shared and published as well so everybody can quickly save the date for August 10th. It's on Monday evening at 7:00 PM will be that Facebook Live event.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yeah, could you, would you mind just reiterating for everyone? If anyone has any feedback to give at this point, you know, what the best way to be, would be to reach you, or who you would like them to reach out to, if they have any thoughts? Of course, you people can send us messages as well, and we can pass those along.
Yes, please, any feedback that you want to come directly to me. My email address, it's K I K R at Kalamazoo.org. And there will also be the hello email at KalamazooCity.org. Neil Conway will be helping me put together the website where you can access both the documents and then give comments right there directly on the website as well.
Thank you. It might be good timing to share this as well, but I know this is not true of all of us, but I am very much guilty of it. But during COVID, I do not get my mail as frequently in person at City Hall. So for individuals sending us letters, it's really helpful if you can reach out by phone or email us during COVID because it might be somewhat more delayed than usual for us to get mail.
Point, Commissioner, appreciate that. Anyone else? So thanks again. So even though it is a little awkward and the option is to call in as Deputy City Manager Chamberlain indicated, and he will come on again here, but now is the opportunity for general public.
Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I was waving my hand up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay, just very briefly, I wanted to thank Director Kick, Director Bonner, and City Attorney Robinson for the work that was done to make this ordinance even more digestible in terms of being able to operationalize it. I do just want to lift up two things. And I want to say this now, and I've already shared this with you all. In terms of the Civil Rights Board and that component, the original ordinance that we presented on in February, that board had investigative and adjudicative powers. That's how Grand Rapids originally formed theirs. That's not how it was upon adoption. And that's the slight changes that you see to that in ours. But the difference between Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo is that they have an Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And as Director Bonner has just lifted up, it's just her. And so I just want to make sure that I lift up that we are making sure that Director Bonner upfront is supported with the staff that's needed to effectively do the work that has to be done with this board. Because as we're discussing, you know, fair housing and housing, it's a civil rights board, which is much larger than that. So I just want to say that at this moment now. And thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry, I didn't see you waving. Looking for other waves, all right. All right, so now we are to the opportunity for public comments. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain.
Yes, we do have a number of comments here tonight, and we'll begin those right about now.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, and Vice Mayor. My name is Jacquez Robertson. I'm calling to show my support for the Housing Equity Ordinance. Housing has been an issue in Kalamazoo for some time and continues to be an issue. In the midst of COVID-19, there's no better time to adapt the Housing Equity Ordinance that would allow for more people, more specifically our most vulnerable populations, to be able to access housing. As housing is a determinant of quality of life, there is an imperative need for this. I thank you, Vice Mayor Griffin, for championing this, and I hope that tonight results in a passing. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Hoffman. I live on the north side of Kalamazoo. I'm calling in support of the Housing Equity Ordinance. Many of us can't even imagine what it is to be without a home. And specifically with children, to think that someone has to get up and go to school or go to work, and yet they don't know where they're going to sleep is not only unjust, it is unfair and it's not humane. Did you know that over 53% of people here said they didn't even know how they would report discrimination? Did you know that black folk and brown folk are more affected by homelessness and evictions than any other population? It is my hope that the city of Kalamazoo will take to heart what this can do in our community. We can set the lead, we can take a stand on behalf of our residents and our citizens and say to them, you matter, and your housing matters. I implore you, please vote yes for this Housing Equity Ordinance. We will do tremendous things within our community and for the families and individuals we serve and live with. Thank you.
My name is Tom Jengola, and I live in the city of Kalamazoo. Silence is consent. Just 10 days ago, across the street from City Hall, an event was held. The purpose of it was to speak against racism and for equality, things that every person should see value in. Unfortunately, the organizers of the event decided that one of the featured speakers should be someone who clearly does not share those values. My issue is not with the organizers or the speaker. My issue is with city commission members and the city manager. You reach out to people in Kalamazoo, ask for them to trust you to be their voices, and your reaction to this event failed them. As a private citizen, you have a right to speak out. As an elected or appointed official, you have an obligation to speak out. But that's not what happened. Instead, five of you, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Knott, Ms. Hess, and Mr. Ritzma stood silent. Mr. Pradel and Mr. Cunningham offered political platitudes, and Mr. Urban went so far as to say that addressing antisemitism concerns would only serve as a deterrent. would only serve as a distraction. Let me say that again, that voicing concerns about antisemitism at a racial equality rally would be a distraction. And while all of this is bad enough, it gets worse because Mr. Cunningham was actually involved in the promotion of the event. Again, as an individual, you have the right to do many things. But as an elected official, you cannot separate your acts as a private citizen from your responsibility as an elected official. Of course, I have email documentation of all of this commentary. Before I go on, I'm sure the commission members will be anxious to point out the inclusive message that was expressed at the event. I'm here to say that was simply lip service and does not stand up. Repugnant views expressed by the speaker as recently as two and five days before the event, going back months before the event, cannot erase a last-minute conscience of convenience. At this point, I'm left with one of three possible conclusions. The members of this commission are either incompetent, they're cowards, or they believe these despicable views themselves. We have the opportunity to provide a fourth possibility. First, some action must be taken against Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Urban. Their actions show a complete disconnect from the values of this community, this country, and history. Perhaps both members should be required to spend time with leaders in the Jewish community and learn about the real history of antisemitism. As for the remainder of you, I'll say again that you failed in your obligations to this community by staying silent. A small but worthwhile step in the right direction may be an open and public declaration by the body and endorsed by all condemning antisemitism and all who hold those values. If you're unwilling to take such a small symbolic gesture, perhaps the need to reevaluate, perhaps there's a need to reevaluate, perhaps you need to reevaluate if you belong in the roles you're in. Stand up and walk out now. Let people with an actual willingness to stand up for what is right take your place. Again, silence is consent, and in this case, silence will.
Hello, this is Matt Smith. I'm a resident of the Vine Neighborhood in Kalamazoo. I am a librarian, local historian, and housing advocate in Kalamazoo. I'm here to support wholeheartedly the Housing Equity Ordinance. And really, my question to the commission is why is this taking so long? Why hasn't this been passed yesterday? This needed to have been passed yesterday. David Anderson, Aaron Knott, Jack Urban, Janie Hess, Chris Pradel, why isn't this passed already? All the work has been done on this. This goes way back. All the work's been done. All the data has been gathered. All the listening sessions had already been done. All the heavy lifting, I might add, have been done by Black women in this community. So why hasn't, why is this taking so long? You need to pass this yesterday. It's a very simple ordinance that protects people from discrimination, different forms of discrimination. That's it. It's an anti-discrimination ordinance. And it also calls for a civil rights board that has power to enforce that, which is hugely important. It doesn't have enforcement. It's not going to be effective. It protects people with criminal convictions, right? Mass incarceration started with some of LBJ's policies way back then, massively incarcerating Black men, including Black men in Kalamazoo. So it hopes to remedy that fact in the future so white landlords can't discriminate against people with convictions. It protects people with housing choice vouchers that go way back in American history. That was supposed to solve the segregation problem, and it would have if it wasn't for the fact that white landlords didn't have to take part in the housing voucher system. So guess what? It made our communities more segregated than they even were. So it tries to remedy that problem with this, which disproportionately harms Black people in Kalamazoo and Black renters. It tries to protect people that have an eviction record. The eviction rate in Kalamazoo is four point four five in general, but on the north side, it's nine point two, more than half. On the east side, it's eight point two. In Edison, it's nine point four. Again, disproportionately affecting Black spaces. It tries, this ordinance tries to remedy that. So ask yourself, why is this taking so long? Why? That are just trying to stop the harm and stop the bleeding. You need to pass this yesterday. And don't pat yourself on the back after you do it because there's a lot more work to be done. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This is Toby Hannah Davies from Isaac, and I do live in the city. Let me tell you a story about taking a risk with someone who had spent years in prison. In the nineteen nineties, I hired an African-American man, very recently out of prison, who had been convicted as an accomplice to a murder. If that's all any of us knew about him, we'd be very likely to be unwilling to give him a job or an apartment. But because I knew more than that, I made one of the best hires of my life. He had taken all the college courses available to him while he was in prison. He was a gentle, kind, very wise person. He was a really good writer with great computer skills, great listening skills, so articulate and motivated. I hired him as Assistant Director of the nonprofit I directed it, and I never regretted it. He thanked me later for giving him a chance, that first job out of prison that made all the difference. But he was the one full of promise and talent that would have been disregarded if I hadn't looked beyond his criminal record. He went on to become a beloved professor at the University of Michigan Dearborn. There are many other people full of promise who have a criminal record, disqualifying them, but who would make positive contributions of all sorts if they were given a chance. This community is full of people, especially people who are Black and Brown because of the way mass incarceration works, who will make the best of the opportunity they are given when they get a safe, decent place to live. Housing is fundamental to people's success. We all need to look beyond a person's criminal record and be willing to find out about a person's strengths. Thank you.
I'm Ray Sweeney, resident of Kalamazoo and a member of Isaac's Affordable Housing Task Force. I was present at the working session where this ordinance was brought before you. I still remember some of the key data obtained by GARE based on interviews with persons who require affordable housing. Nearly everyone complained about the cost of housing and their inability to afford it. The opinion was shared across all, less commonly, people reported difficulty in obtaining housing because of issues related to previous convictions, previous evictions, and the use of housing choice vouchers. These issues were especially problematic for people of color. Housing discrimination based on race has been against the law for many years. De facto racial discrimination occurs when prior convictions or evictions are used for the, an exclusion of a person from the applicant pool. How can this be true? In the past several months, we have become especially aware of the burden placed on people of color that has prevented them from their rightful place in the USA. Can those who are privileged then blame those same people for some of the consequences of the injustices of the past? How much data must be presented to show the rice, racial bias, bias of our society before we recognize that the sins of our past are being visited on the next generations of the sons and daughters of the oppressed? What this ordinance does is no different than what Ban the Box did for employment applications. People with convictions and evictions won't be automatically excluded from the applicant pool, but would be offered a choice to show what, why their past should not be the basis for denial of a release agreement. Our society needs the protections provided by the new ordinance. Before evictions and convictions, it covers beyond evictions and convictions, it covers a variety of problems in the housing market that can be discriminatory. It is well crafted and draws from the experiences of other municipalities dealing with equity and housing. Besides dealing with past convictions and evictions, the same protection should be afforded people with housing choice vouchers. The use of applicant fees as a means to discourage applicants should end. The fee must bear some relationship to actual cost. The ordinance does not fix all the problems of affordable housing. It addresses inequities. I pray that the goals of this ordinance will be embraced by most so that the enforcement can be means to fix only the recalcitrant managers. Then let's concentrate on fixing problems of income and affordability. These were reported to be the principal problems of preventing people from acquiring affordable housing. These fixes required to fulfill our pledge to end generational poverty so that the prosperity is shared by all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Timothy Bonds, and I live in the county of Kalamazoo. I am a T three paraplegic, and I'm having a problem, actually, I don't know, I guess this is the appropriate place to leave a comment, because I'm having a problem with my housing situation. I'm housed in fifty-eight West Apartments, where I feel like I was discriminated against. Again, I'm a T three paraplegic. I have an upcoming surgery, a large surgery that I had to postpone twice. Now, here at this complex, I was told that I would be able to resign when my lease was up come August seventh. I was never offered the chance to resign. So now, I'm told, without ample time, I think I had, within thirty days, to, that I had to move. So now, I have, I had to reschedule my surgery, which I rescheduled three times now, once because of COVID, and once because of this, or two times now, once because of COVID, and once because of my housing issue, which I had to reschedule for August the tenth. So, yeah, so I'm, I don't know where else to go with this, this problem, but you can reach me at three one three seven nine nine six three five zero. My name is Timothy Bonds, and I'm housed at the fifty-eight West. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Stanley. I live within the city of Kalamazoo. I was just wondering if the city manager can create a policy that can use the force of police or the executive branch in order to enforce that policy the same day or the day before they called the police to execute following that policy. So for example, if the, if the city manager decides to make a policy that says, if you want to come in the city hall, you have to wear a purple shirt. I don't know. And then if somebody does not comply with that policy, can he then call the police and have them arrested if they don't wear a purple shirt? And is that something that they can do moments before, the day before, ten days before, like a city ordinance? Just trying to figure out the answer to that. Thank you very much. Hope you guys have a great day, and thanks for everything you do. Bye.
Jeff Messer, city resident. Last Tuesday, July fourteen, reported city council held its first hybrid meeting. The mayor and some council members attended in person at City Hall, along with some members of the public. The rest of the council and public attended remotely. Attending public meetings in person is now allowed by Governor Whitmer's order. Not more than fifty individuals in total may attend an indoor meeting, including board and commission members, staff, and the public. Physical distancing and wearing of face coverings are required. These are pretty much the conditions under which the Kalamazoo City Commission held its last in-person meeting four months ago on Monday, March sixteen. I am requesting that the Kalamazoo City Commission initiate hybrid meetings beginning with its next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, August three. This change will make it easier for the public to participate in meetings, including myself, who was unable to participate via voicemail message during your last meeting. In addition, you may remember my remarks from the March thirty-first meeting. I stated my opposition to city ordinances being permanently changed during one hundred percent virtual meetings where a portion of the voters are denied the opportunity to participate. Changing to hybrid meetings will provide maximum opportunity for citizen participation. Thank you for your consideration.
Marissa Harrington, Kalamazoo City resident. The stats show that there is discrimination in housing in Kalamazoo, period. You cannot argue facts. If we claim to be a city that wants to truly work toward equity, the one place to do this is in the area of housing. The important part about the GARE study is that you are able to see real-time responses from residents here that are affected by the rental practices. Everyone deserves safe housing. Everyone deserves affordable housing. Change is scary, but we must be bold in our decision-making to ensure true equity for all Kalamazoo residents. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben Brown, and I live within the city limits of Kalamazoo. I would like to make a statement in support of the Housing Equity Ordinance. Rental discrimination destroys the community, which includes homeowners, not just the people being kept from renting, by eliminating the total community diversity and genius. Rental discrimination looks like a strategy to safeguard the financial strength of property owners, but it creates a greater community of self-fulfilling prophecy and regional decline. The Housing Equity Ordinance is not the total and last answer needed, but it is a strong component of reweaving Kalamazoo's resilience and health. It should be unanimously adopted by the city and its citizens. While it is easy to focus on landlords citing challenges, we would do well to ask ourselves, how do landlords who have not eliminated people based on school status, aid being received, flight from abuse, identity papers, or past convictions fared so well and have satisfied renters? Don't be shocked. There are many. And in passing this ordinance, we have an opportunity to better all community members' lives, even the community itself. Thank you. And an addendum I might add to that comment is we need to be careful not to groom housing development corporations to the detriment of people trying to purchase homes. I definitely can cite an example to prove that point. And also in terms of discrimination and people not discriminating, look at some of the Kalamazoo co-op, housing co-ops, that they fared very well without discrimination. Thank you very much. My number, by the way, is seven three four six three five six eight six five.
Yes, my name is Ed Genesis. I am a Kalamazoo resident. I live on the north side of Kalamazoo. And I'm speaking in regards of the Housing Equity Ordinance and just lifting up the fact that I am a criminal justice reform organizer. And as we move together to have a more equitable community and a more equitable city, it's imperative that we move on this Housing Equity Ordinance because people can work and be employed for the city and still because of a twenty-year-old criminal record, cannot have adequate housing. And this is a problem that we must come together and fix. We don't want city workers living out of hotels and still helping the city progress. We got the ban on the box, so we have a lot of people that's even employed driving the metro within the city now with felonies, which is what was a great feat. And now we have to make sure that those same people that are proud to drive with the city and drive other people back and forth to their places of work, or their places of receiving education, or going to a training, or the hospital and doctors, so forth. We have to make sure that these people can come home at night and rest their head within the city with, with the comfortability of knowing that they are supported by the city with having a Housing Equity Ordinance that is pushed, that includes all. Thank you.
Hi, this is Dr. Michelle Johnson, and I'm calling first to say thank you and to praise the work of Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin and Stephanie Hoffman for their engagement, advocacy, and the quality and quantity of the community visioning and work that has gone into the housing ordinance. I think it's particularly important for a number of reasons, but especially that the ordinance is intended to protect community members from discrimination and to have a civil rights board with oversight and the ability to connect that accountability. I sleep better because those types of folks like Vice Mayor Griffin and Stephanie Hoffman and a whole host of us. and a whole host of us exist. And I encourage the commission to do all they can to support, nourish, and heed the direction of women like us. I'm also calling because I've not heard a formal apology to the young people who were cheer-gassed in June. Perhaps it happened, but I didn't see the apology and I need to see that admission of error as much as I saw and remember the actions against our youth that were seeking peaceful resolution to police brutality. I call for a very visible apology and the change in the infrastructure to sustain the promise necessary for a real request for forgiveness. I'm also calling because I haven't heard any updates on an immediate independent investigation of the links between known and emerging white absurdist who sometimes see themselves as supremacists, hate groups, protesters, alt-right racists, subscribing individuals, those types of folks that, and acts of violence in Kalamazoo city government, business, the legal, educational, and especially public safety systems. We know we have a long history. You can get in touch with me to talk about it. You can talk to Jacob Johnson about it, from slavery apologists to nineteen eighty when police escorted the Kalamazoo from the library. But anyway, these calls are coming from the community and I want to know that there's no place for this power of hate in city government and public service of those who work in essential moments of life and death. I want to end on a note of encouragement and thanks to the multi-generational activists, especially our young people and business people, board members, city staff, CEOs, bus drivers, waitstaff, and healthcare workers, and all the other essential people who are holding for what is sustainable and fair. At this time, we have to show the past and present what we're made of. We have an enormous opportunity. Let's not miss this. Thank you so much for all you do. Again, Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin, thank you.
Howdy, my name is Matthew Leckel. I'm a resident of the city of Kalamazoo. I'm calling in tonight to offer a public comment in support of the Housing Equity Ordinance that you all are going to be voting on. I encourage you to take that up and vote for it. I think it is common sense, simple, practical, but smart and effective strategy, and it's a great starting point. So I think we should get it passed ASAP, evaluate its effectiveness, and continue to do more things like it. Thank you, bye.
Hello, my name is Charlay Davis and I am the Executive Director of Isaac and I do live in the city of Kalamazoo. Good evening to our mayor, vice mayor, and city commissioners and staff. For the past few years, Isaac has been at the table around housing equity work along with value partners such as TRHT, the city of Kalamazoo, the Fair Housing Center, the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, and others. We are so thankful to Vice Mayor Patrice for sharing her housing brief some years back that she researched and wrote, as that was the needed catalyst for this work and for this ordinance. As a nation and locally, we are being called to engage in system shifts and changes. This Housing Equity Ordinance is a piece of this work. We want to reiterate the importance of this ordinance, helping to ensure that beloved community members who have a past criminal record or past eviction are not being denied housing. For us at Isaac who facilitated focus groups, I think something that was so powerful was that community members from different locations and different backgrounds shared their housing journey stories. What we began hearing were common themes around housing obstacles and impediments. When we start hearing or seeing common themes and similar stories that different individuals are experiencing, we must start looking at the system and not the person to find fault. We must start looking at the system and not the beloved community member to find fault. Equity and justice is directed at the root causes of disparities. Equity and justice addresses the underlying structures or causes of these disparities. We must ask ourselves what is in place in our system that is keeping a group of community members from being able to access secure, safe, and quality housing. That is why this ordinance is so important. And we must humanize our systemic work. The beloved community members who sat, ate, and talked with us were mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, grandmothers, grandfathers. There were children and a grandbaby at the focus group with their family member. These were family members and loved ones deserving of being held as beloved. We are looking forward to seeing the Housing Equity Ordinance move forward soon, especially as COVID nineteen is magnifying inequities. So thank you again for engaging in systemic work and solutions.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Faison. I live in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and I'm calling from Isaac. I am calling in support of the Fair Housing Ordinance. I would like to thank Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin, Isaac, TRHT for coming together to develop this Fair Housing Ordinance. Last year, I did a lot of canvassing in the city of Kalamazoo and I introduced this Fair Housing Ordinance to a lot of the city constituents, individuals that live here, and everyone was very much in support of this Fair Housing Ordinance. The city of Kalamazoo desperately needs it. We currently are dealing with the fact that Kalamazoo Public Schools has the highest rate of homelessness for the kids in the state of Michigan. I also used to drive for Kalamazoo Public Schools and we definitely had to pick up kids that were homeless. Unfortunately, a lot of times when these kids were picked up, people were able to tell exactly the fact that they were homeless because of where they were, whether it was a hotel, or it could have been a homeless shelter such as the mission, the YWCA. A lot of these kids had to deal with bullying as well as being made fun of, and it's not something that a child should have to go through as well as already going through the fact of being homeless and knowing that their parents are still fighting to try and obtain housing, and they're only homeless because of obviously barriers that are there. So I am definitely in support of this Fair Housing Ordinance and asking the city commissioners to continue to support this. We need to try to get this implemented into the city as soon as possible because that is the only way we're going to be able to start reducing the numbers and making sure that every individual has access to homes and to housing, which some of us may take for granted. Because like I said, at the end of the day, even though we might not have been through it, we always going to know someone who has been through it. And sometimes life gets the best of us and now it's like we all have to stand together in order to make a difference and to make sure when we fall, we pick each other up.
Hello, my name is Jacob Johnson. And I am calling, my name is Jacob Johnson, greetings commissioners, calling today in support of the Housing Equity push, but would also again like to remind Commissioner, Mayor David Anderson and City Manager Jim Ritzma that we have not forgotten about the need for a push for reparations in a specific Black agenda. I call on our city commissioners to push that agenda. Racism is a public health crisis. We are seeing other cities and other mayors jump on board in support of reparations agendas, and I think it's time that the city fall in line with other cities across the nation and counties in setting up at least a commission to look more at reparations than a specific Black agenda for Kalamazoo. Because City Manager Ritzma and David Anderson, if Black Lives Matter, then we need a comprehensive agenda and plan to deal with the racial inequities that we see in Kalamazoo. So I look forward to seeing the proposal when it gets written and totally back a policy. And we're ready, the time is now. We can't wait anymore. And we'd like to talk a little bit about comfort and change. And for some of our commissioners, there seems to be an idea that we can make radical change and be comfortable while doing that. And commissioners, y'all know who I'm talking about, that there comes a time when silence and trying to play the moderate role does not push agendas forward. So thank you commissioners for your work, specifically Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin. And to the others, I expect more. I really do. I expect more. Time is now, the racial disparities are too great. Black Lives Matter, twenty twenty uprising is among us. I am a fourth-generation Kalamazoo resident. I have children that I am raising in Kalamazoo. So I will not let up off of this, we will not let up this, uplift Kalamazoo to people Black Lives Matter.
Hi, my name is Shalana Lewis. I'm a resident of the city of Kalamazoo. I live in Vine neighborhood. I'm also the director of the Truth, Race, and Healing Transformation Work at the Kalamazoo Community Foundation. I am calling today in support of the Housing Equity Ordinance, changing chapter eighteen of the housing code locally to expand protections against discrimination and increase enforcement. I believe this is so important, as we've seen across the community, that the need for housing has grown for populations that are housing unstable. We're continuing to have a crisis on our hands and we need strong protections and support for residents to access housing. Affordability is not always the only issue, particularly when it comes to people of color and black folks in our community. We know they're facing discrimination and we know that they're facing barriers such as evictions and conviction histories, housing vouchers, et cetera, to accessing housing. We don't have time now or the ability to allow people to switch to the craft and not go protected. We need to support our community and part of that support means enhancing enforcement. So one of the most important things that the partners who are looking at this along with the Vice Mayor looked at for this ordinance was making sure that a civil rights board had significant enforcement power and that they could hold folks accountable to the policies that are on the books in the expanded policy. This is so important. And while I haven't seen yet the updated language that the city staff has been working hard on, I hope and trust that that adjudicative power and enforcement power is still in there and we need to continue to push for a strong with peace board who can help our community get access to housing and get on their feet. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Valerie Brooks. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Kalamazoo. My family has owned property in the community for over forty years. It is possible to provide housing to people without discrimination. Not discriminating doesn't affect your bottom line. I support this Housing Equity Ordinance. Thank you and you have a good day.
Hello, my name is Victoria Marsiti. I do live within the city limits of Kalamazoo. I'm calling to ask what your plans are on the commission for reparations agenda and commission. We need to address many gaps that have resulted from and are still being supported by systemic racism in our community. Reparations isn't a new idea and we're seeing models popping up and coming forward in other cities in the country, so when is ours going to begin? In addition, I need to hear what is being done to move toward real, actual affordable housing in Kalamazoo. I'm not talking about the things that Anderson and Ritzma have been doing. Big thanks to Matt Smith for breaking down the lies about the supposed affordable housing projects that have been happening lately. That's not what we mean. We mean people actually being able to not be homeless in our community. With the rent crisis beating down many doors in our community, we need those of you with security and safety to be figuring out how to extend that security and safety to the rest of the city. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, commissioners, manager. My name is William Rowland. I reside in the city of Kalamazoo, a forty-eight-year resident, Kalamazoo's north side, Cobb Avenue. I'm calling to express concerns about traffic, not only the volume of traffic, but the speed of traffic as it travels in our community. Major Cear, Kalamazoo Portage, I mean, I'm sorry, Patterson, Cobb, Woodward, Williams Street, there's so much traffic. People are speeding at excessive high rates of speed and we are interested in what can be done to slow this traffic down. I've spoken with Chief Coakley as recently as today and earlier in the week, previous weeks. I continuously make calls to public safety, ask them to come down and do something. Exhibition driving with all these high-powered engines in these cars. I'm concerned that somebody is eventually going to be injured or killed, youth or elderly people in the neighborhood. Again, I've been a forty-five-plus-year resident of the city of Kalamazoo and actually I have contemplated whether do I want to continue to live in my neighborhood? And I feel bad about that because I love my neighbors and my neighborhood, but at the same time, I'm asking what can be done? What are you willing to do to slow this down? And I know that people say that when we stop our young people, we're profiling. Well, if we don't do something, we're ignoring our jobs as public safety officers as well. We're going to be getting together, we will be petitioning the commission and public safety to do something about traffic. There will be a petition coming from a neighborhood. We are very, very, very dissatisfied with the amount of traffic control that we get here and I was just wondering if someone could do something, again, to assist us. I appreciate you, we thank you, and good evening.
Hey there, this is Lyndale LaGuard. I live and work in Kalamazoo as well as living and working in Grand Rapids. Want to thank you all for moving forward on this ordinance, it's very important despite the opposition. I heard Ms. Bond's comment, again, as I've said the past, I'd be really careful about working with the Fair Housing Center. You guys got to really be careful about that because you'll find a lot of things just die there. They run by racist realtors or sellout Negroes. But my question is, why has it been, why do we change the filing date from one hundred and eighty days to ninety-one days when generally, local and statewide, one hundred and eighty days is typically the time span that you get to file a complaint? So I'd just like for you to reconsider that. Sometimes people have not discovered that they've been faced with discrimination until that ninety-second, ninety-third day, while they're sitting in the train and they hear a story or something and by then the statute of limitations has run. So I don't suggest keeping it at one eighty. Thanks, bye-bye.
Yeah, good evening commissioners and resident of Kalamazoo. My name is Andrew Chaponda. I am a resident of Kalamazoo Township. I also have seventeen years of residence in the city of Kalamazoo and only three in the township. I also work and play and pray in Kalamazoo and this is the place where I say is my home. I'm coming here tonight to support the proposal to ensure that we have equitable housing in the city of Kalamazoo. Before the commission gives a proposal by the people of Kalamazoo, that we do certain things to make sure that housing is not only accessible, but also affordable by the people of Kalamazoo. I say this because of both experience. For six years, I was a property manager for one of the largest property companies here in Kalamazoo, fronting both the east and the west of the city. My job as property manager was to assess who was suitable for an apartment and who was not. My job also included checking tenants to court for when they did not pay their rent. The process of eviction was also part of that process and what an experience for one to have, to have to send a family out of their home and into the rain or cold. I'm also coming to you now in my new capacity as a housing advocate, somebody who works twenty-four-seven to help people find and maintain housing here in Kalamazoo. I also have the fortunate part of also doing the same in the other nine counties of southeast Michigan, where I have seen how important housing is and how perilous housing can be if somebody does not have an advocate to let them do what is important to maintain that housing. So we are here today in Kalamazoo to look at how we can help the city of Kalamazoo have affordable housing in the city. The things that you have heard enunciated here include eviction issues, issues of application fee, issues of issues of application fee, issues of people with a with a.
Uh, hi, Jacob Johnson, calling again with distracted, driving around with the kids. Uh, just wanted to follow up. Um, lifelong Kalamazoo city resident, wanted to remind folks or just lift up, because I know it's not news to any of the commissioners, that the city of Kalamazoo falls within the county. Um, our county of Kalamazoo has declared racism a public health crisis. Um, if racism is a public health crisis and if Black Lives Matters, we need the city to uh uh address a comprehensive agenda for black folks and disparities, racial disparities that we see in Kalamazoo. I hope and would expect that that comprehensive Black agenda would include uh some some housing initiatives specifically uh for black folks in Kalamazoo. Um, I want to remind folks that change is never comfortable and uh city commissioners, if you all expect to make radical change addressing hundreds of years of racial disparities, um if you expect that to, you know, to do that work being comfortable, um I I I would like y'all to look at that a little bit. Um, I'm here, I'm ready uh for when um next steps along that conversation uh for a specific Black agenda happens. Thank you for your time.
Yes, good evening commissioners, my name is Andrew Chaponda. I actually stay in Kalamazoo Township, although I also take in Kalamazoo for seventeen years, the only three of which I've been in the city. Uh, I'm coming to you today to support the housing ordinance that we are, uh, the commission is debating only for a number of reasons. I understand that uh uh we have a serious housing problem here in Kalamazoo uh which can only be addressed by addressing some of the issues that are in this ordinance. I am saying this uh 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 by reason of having been a property manager whose role was to uh to make sure that apartments were filled, but at the same time to make sure that those who did not qualify were excluded from the apartment. But for today, I am also a housing advocate and my job is to make sure that people accept and maintain and the housing as much as possible. There are very, very serious issues in terms of how people can access housing. The Kalamazoo is going to be part of a of a of a of a of a movement that says housing is a human right. This is an opportunity for the city of Kalamazoo to do something about housing for all. I also understand that there are a lot of good initiatives here in the city of Kalamazoo like the HPK and the FFE. These initiatives have in their in their in their in their uh objectives, issues of equity. How can they even not, as a fact, feed in achieving their goals if housing is is not an issue? Before I finish, I want to talk to landlords right now and thank you very much for those who have been giving us housing in very difficult situations. I also want to urge the landlord to accept the rescue fund that the government is putting forward for the ninety percent of the rent owed for March until July. I think it is a good business, it makes business good sense that the landlords accept this funding. To to finish, I also want to 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 thank very, very much uh the landlords and tell them that, you know, while we are advocating for housing, we also understand that this is a business. I think we, if we all read and understand what we are talking about, we find that they are set there to make sure that your properties are protected and the rent that you need is paid. What needs to change is how we accept the housing. I want to thank you very much.
Hello and good evening to all of the county commissioners, Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin and uh Mayor David Anderson. This is Gwendolyn Hooker. I am the CEO of Helping Other People Hope Through Navigation and I am calling in this evening to say that I adamantly support the Housing Equity Ordinance. Um, I feel that it is very important and I stand by it one thousand percent and encourage everyone to pass this uh this ordinance as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the the last public comment.
Thank you, DCM Chamberlain. I want to thank everybody who took the time and made the effort to call in and express your heartfelt thoughts and comments to us. That's very important. Next on our item is the consent agenda, city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items this evening. First is the approval of a purchase of video conferencing equipment from Trace Three through the Mydio Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-five cents. Next is the adoption of a resolution designating the polling facility location for precincts one and three to be used during the election on August four, twenty twenty at and at each election thereafter. Next is the approval and acceptance of a permanent easement with Oak Ridge Estates for the consideration of the amount of forty-five, forty-five hundred ninety-two dollars and a temporary grading permit for the consideration of one thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Next is the approval and acceptance of a permanent easement from Phi Nguin at twenty-one oh eight East Cork Street for the consideration in the amount of one thousand twenty-six dollars. Next is the approval and acceptance of a public easement from Jerome Junior and Donna M. Walinski at twenty-one twenty-two East Cork Street for the consideration of amount of one thousand twenty-six dollars. Next, the approval and acceptance of a permanent easement from the Kalamazoo Valley Non-Profit Housing Corporation at twenty-two oh eight East Cork Street for the consideration amount of one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And finally, approval of the following appointments and reappointments to the Environmental Concerns Committee, the appointment of Wayne Bond for a term expiring on January one, twenty twenty-three, and the reappointment of Aaron Wright for a term beginning on January one, twenty twenty and expiring on January one, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Commissioners, requested action is to approve items one through seven and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Cunningham, supported by Commissioner Hess. Clerk Borley, would you please call the roll? Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Next uh is reports and legislation. Uh, Manager Ritzma, any reports?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Um, I'd like to give a couple of updates uh regarding the public safety transparency page and um activities around the action plan. I know a question was asked about the independent review and um I'm glad to report that last week the Citizen Public Safety Review and Appeal Board uh met and agreed to help us uh select a, an outside review organization or investigator. And um that process is underway and uh we look forward to their help and getting that review done yet uh this summer and uh moving that work forward. I'm also glad to be able to say that we're planning on sending our public safety recruits to the Kalamazoo Valley Community College Academy this next month, starting in the end of August. Um, and we look forward to that partnership continuing and um and yeah, we're just very pleased about that. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ritzma. Uh, Attorney Robinson, your ports?
None, Your Honor, thank you.
Clerk Borley?
Um, I just want to encourage people who have received absentee ballots to make sure to get those back by election day, which is August third. Um, at this point, we have um, we have over eleven hun, I'm sorry, eleven thousand one hundred absentee ballots out and we have about forty, almost forty-seven hundred back, which is quite a few back, but there's still a lot out. So encourage people to get those, um, get those ballots in and um, yeah, thank you.
And and just a quick reminder, will people still be able to vote in person?
Yes, people will be able to vote in person. Uh, normal polling locations will be open for the normal hours of seven AM to eight PM on election day.
Thank you, Clerk Borley. Appreciate it. So we have come to the time in our meeting for commissioners to make comments. Are there commissioner comments this evening? I know there are. Commissioner Urban?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to uh everybody know that I went on a ride along this last weekend uh from uh two, ten o'clock in the evening till four o'clock the next morning. It was uh jam-packed with uh a lot of activity. Uh, of course, part of what I was looking at was the uh 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 mobile nuisance parties and uh I, it got a good idea, a better understanding of just how complex that issue is. And although uh the press wants to talk about uh the violent uh events that go on 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 weekends, especially they were asking me even today to comment on that. Uh, that uh uh is grabs attention and it's important. But the issue of uh the corrosive effect of of nuisance parties going on every weekend, night after night in the same neighborhood is uh very detrimental to quality of life in our community. And uh so um all of you, uh my colleagues who haven't done a ride along recently or attended the Citizens Police Academy, I I highly recommend it. Uh, both types of uh education are extremely valuable, especially to someone like me. Uh, and I I appreciate the opportunity and I I'll be giving you a report later on this week. So uh uh I would love for.
Uh, we seem to have temporarily lost.
Can. Attention that, yeah.
I'm going to go on, is there another commissioner who'd like to make a comments tonight? I'm Commissioner Urban, we are both. Now he's muted. Someone else would like, yes?
Um, I want to first highlight the hybrid meeting. Um, I have a meeting with um City Manag- Manager Ritzma tomorrow and I'll be bringing it up to him. I think that's something we should be exploring uh if it's an opportunity that's out there. Um, I want to also highlight Ban the Box. Um, I know that the city has done it already. Uh, I think that is something that we should start uh exploring as it pertains to some of our um relationships with other entities. And also, you know, trying to find different ways to advocate for that on a state and a national level. Um, the other piece I wanted to talk to, uh, we did have a successful event with uh Stephen Jackson and Paul, who are the brothers of um, the brothers of uh George Floyd, uh where we stood in solidarity to ask for justice. Um, and also, you know, asking for change within our community that's systematic. So I do, uh, I can't speak for my colleagues, but uh, you know, it's unacceptable, any anti-Semitic comments that are out there. Um, and I have love for all those who have love for everyone. Um, I love even my enemies, so even, you know, no matter what you try to cast or depict on me, uh, you'll get the same response. So I appreciate you, I love you. Um, if you don't want me here in in the year, uh, I don't plan to run, but if I did, that'd be a good time to advocate for me not to have my seat anymore. Um, also wanted to uh just take a moment to highlight the housing ordinance. I appreciate uh all of the staff and the work that you guys have been doing. Uh, I will love for this to, you know, move expediently. Um, and so I look forward to this journey. Uh, once again, I appreciate Patrice Griffin's uh leadership in that space. Um, the other part is uh, there's a lot of conversation around reparations right now. Um, and let me even take it a step further, resolutions. I I'll take a a page out of uh Mr. Vernon Payne's book saying, um, culture eats policy for breakfast. And, you know, I think what we are trying to do, and this is speaking to my colleagues, what we're trying to do is is do more than just talk. Oftentimes, resolutions don't have the the procedures in place, they don't have the policies in place, and I'm not just asking to organize a committee because that's been brought to the table. That was brought to the table on day one when a lot of this, these issues arose uh after George Floyd's death. Um, I'm not asking for that, I'm asking for transformative, systematic change, nothing less. Uh, if we do, if at some point we do bring a resolution forward, it will include systematic changes with the expectation that it'll create the cultural change within our our city um administration. Uh, so that's just not just KDPS, but that's all-inclusive. Um, and not just within city administration, it includes the county, all of our relationships there, whether it's Gettys Office, uh Sheriff, Sheriff Fuller's Office, whether it's a juvenile home, um, whether it's our judges uh and so forth. So um, that's one of the things that I just want to keep highlighting is that um a lot of the silence that's going on right now is, you know, us working fervently in the background to ensure that we're putting the right um, the right uh strongholds in place to make sure that we're moving our count, community forward. The standard that we allowed in the past, we will no longer allow that standard in our community. And so in order to get to the change that we expect and the change that we need, um, we have to make sure that we we're thinking it through critically um and coming up with creative ideas. Um, and so I look forward to that journey.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. Uh, Commissioner Urban, we we lost part of what you were saying. I don't know if you want to let that go or you want to try to wrap up your comments anyway.
Uh, I think I got got most of it out there. I I I be beginning to realize that this is a common problem and that no one's discriminating against me for saying something that is really uh pretty non-controversial, I think, among most of us. So that's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Urban. Other commissioners like to add to the conversation this evening? Commissioner Pradel and then Commissioner Hess.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, tonight during the consent agenda, uh, we passed a number of easements, uh, three of which, um, there were actually a couple more that had to be ironed out, three of which were brought forward by a gentleman uh near named Jerry who lives on Cork. And for uh several decades, he has uh worked tirelessly to try to keep um safe paths for people to walk up and down Cork Street. Um, he reached out about a month ago, um, expressing concern that um the segment of sidewalk was taken off of the Cork Street construction plan, um, knowing that there, you know, it was bus stop there, apartments. Um, there's also an ROI group home uh along that stretch as well that he cares deeply about. Uh, it's a great example of a citizen who reaches out with a concern and something that they believe in to make the community better. And so I just want to thank him uh for looking that up, staying with it for thirty years, but uh I'm so glad to see that finally that segment of sidewalk on Cork Street, that busy street, will now have a continuous uh sidewalk stretch. Um, and I just want to thank Jerry and his wife Donna. Uh, also thank John Hilliard from Millwood Neighborhood, um Jen Strebs and uh Tom Illing from ROI, who um all worked together to try to figure out how to put these pieces of the puzzle together to solve that prob, excuse me, to solve that problem. And then also to uh Director Baker for uh hearing them out and working really hard to make sure that we could get that in before the project's completed. Um, so kudos to them and um thank you for making our uh community a little bit safer and more walkable. Um, also wanted to just take a moment, um, lift up as well, uh, you know, we're in the homestretch here before the um, the the primary on August fourth. Um, in addition to just wanting to thank our our clerk staff uh for working extra hard to make that possible, um, I also just want to wish all the candidates in the race, both for August and November, best of luck. I can't imagine trying to run a race in a global pandemic, um, but I just remind everybody in this homestretch that it's going to be worth the effort and that uh, you know, the innovation that you show uh to do well in this race is really going to, to speak volumes in how well you're going to serve your constituents if you get elected. Um, uh, also wanted to just kind of lift up for a second. I think a number of us have uh brought light to or talked to the fact that uh the executive order on the moratorium of evictions expired on on July fifteenth and uh so there are a number of people in our community who are going to be facing that. Uh, there's a fifty million dollar pot that was uh from the uh federal aid, um, COVID aid uh that was put aside um in agency eight, uh, the uh agency region eight, uh, Housing Resources Inc. is the uh agency that folks can reach out to in addition to reaching. Housing Resources, Inc. is the agency that folks can reach out to in addition to reaching out to 211 24 seven to ask for referral. But just want to encourage people, just know that Housing Resources, Inc., their offices are closed during COVID. But I'm going to read contact information here really quick. 269 382 0287. Again, 269 382 0287, or again, call 211 24 seven. Their office hours are from 8:30 to 5:00. And again, you know, renters looking for assistance or landlords looking for assistance to be eligible, either need to receive notice to quit or already be in a formal eviction process in the courts. And so, you know, please reach out to them for guidance, even if you're not entirely sure. Again, if you're not sure of your circumstances, or even if you're a landlord, that you're trying to help maintain somebody in, in their residence, please reach out to them. I know that's not a longitudinal solution to the problem, but if you're facing the loss of your, your roof over your head immediately, this is going to be an urgent need for you and there are resources out there to help you out. So please reach out to that as well. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Commissioner Hess.
Good evening. So since our last commission meeting, I've, I've tried to stay busy during this pandemic. A few things that I've done and that are out there and, and I'm just encouraged by all of these things about the state of our city and where our city is going, where our community is going. I attended the housing matters forum that members of our, our city staff led and informed people in the city about the state of housing in Kalamazoo. Kudos to Rebecca Kick and Dorla Bonner and their teams. And to Clyde Robinson for, for actually working on the ordinance that Vice Mayor Griffin has so passionately stood for. I engaged recently with city faith leaders to learn more about the interconnections of faith and culture in our city. I've attended, I attended a virtual Kidnet meeting to grow, to understand the perspective of youth in our city. Kidnet is an awesome resource here in Kalamazoo. And again, kudos to them for having National Summer Learning Day. I'm really happy we had the proclamation for them today. I, I supported Church Women United's quilt project, which celebrated community, together, community. It was an awesome thing that was at the Radisson last weekend. And kudos to all the Church Women United who put that together. I too, like Commissioner Urban, did a ride along last Saturday night with our public safety officer, Officer Helen Brand. I understand the need for good policing. I understand the need for, and, and I appreciate the transparency page. But I, what I saw between 10:00 PM and 3:30 AM was the compassion and the commitment of our officers toward a greater good in this community. It's not easy. This is really complex work. I attended our virtual ECC meeting, the Environmental Concerns Committee. As a commissioner, I sit on the environmental concerns. Environmental concerns don't go away with COVID. And they haven't been able to meet, but they've, we've had two virtual meetings recently where they do talk about things like mosquitoes that are still here. And these are still things that are going to be a part of our community conversation. We had a wonderful presentation from a Michigan State scientist about mosquitoes. They're looking at a way to create a styrofoam recycling program. We talked about the tree canopy in Kalamazoo. So these are things that are about the quality of life in Kalamazoo. So ECC is working hard on your behalf and the behalf of everyone. And I know that we, that we, on the consent agenda, voted Aaron and Wayne back onto ECC. And they are excellent members of this and, and Aaron is chair. Thank you so much for all you do. I sat on a panel of, with, with Michigan Supreme Court Justice Bridget Mary McCormick, with Von Washington and others from the Kalamazoo community on race, education and justice, and learned a whole lot about our justice system. And know that we have a lot of work to do with race and education. I don't want, I don't say these things to say how much it is as I've done, but I, I want to let you know, I believe that the issues before us are very complex. I believe in this commission, in this commission, in the diversity of this commission and working together. I believe in the staff that's working so diligently behind the scenes and every day doing the work and showing up in, in a very weird time. And all of their departments, all the people that work for this city, that do physical labor on the, on the behalf of the city or that, that work on policy and procedure. I too appreciate everyone that called in and enlightened us with your, with your comments. One I would like to leave with Brené Brown quote, Brené Brown is a social worker and a professor. And she said, we don't have to do it all alone. We were never meant to. I want to remind us as a community that we're not doing this alone. It can seem like that when you're trying to make change, but I encourage us all to do together. I look forward to the conversations with my fellow commissioners and I really appreciate you all. And I, I think that we are just doing as well as we can during this time of pandemic and COVID. So mask up, Kalamazoo. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Others who want to contribute? Vice Mayor Griffin.
Um, yes, thank you. Just a few things this evening. So first to touch on the issue of the hybrid meetings. Just want to share with the community that I'm definitely in support of continuing to have access online to meetings. I've heard from various members of the community that while in person is ideal for a lot of folks, for many other reasons, in person is not the best option for people. And so with COVID, one of the things we've been able to see is how this online opening up of online access has increased the ability for people who would not otherwise be able to participate, to participate. So I'm in favor of looking at all the options, but definitely not discontinuing the ability to meet in this way. I also want to comment, and this is something that I brought up at the last commission meeting in terms of with KDPs, still interested in that mechanism for community to be involved in policing as things continuously get brought up. There's still that gap there. And I did have a chance to watch the C-SRAB meeting and, and hear those concerns there. And I know there's still, you know, have to follow back up. But in the meanwhile, there are still real people who really want to be effectively involved in how they are policed. And until we get that mechanism, you know, every two weeks in between commission meetings, that's not cutting it. And then all people are able to do is give one side of the comment. So sooner than later, hopefully we can figure out how to merge community with policing and then that capacity and get that worked out. So while our neighborhoods may vary in many different ways, one thing that is very common that I have come to realize from talking to many different people is that for some reason, people choose to treat residential streets like the drag strip. I don't know really, I really don't know what the problem is. I, I really don't. We, we're experiencing this at all sides of town. I touched on this at the last commission meeting, while we're working on strategies to, you know, slow some of the, the traffic, traffic calming techniques. I, I mentioned that some, my neighbors took it upon themselves to put up a barrier. And there was just a huge event. I live near LeCron Park. There was just a huge event the other weekend where there were tons of people here for Stop the Violence Rally. Nobody disrespected that. Nobody knocked it down and everyone slowed down. So I just want to offer that to people while we're in this in between stage that communities, you know, you do have more, you do have power within this space while we're still trying to work that out. And if anybody, you know, wants to follow up even more with me on some, on traffic calming ways and some things that are being discussed already, please reach out to me and do so. What Commissioner Cunningham said as far as reparations, yep. And I, I just want to comment really quickly. Thank you, Commissioner Urban and Commissioner Hess for sharing your experiences on your ride alongs. So what I, I have some questions on ride alongs. I've not been on a ride along. I don't plan to. You know, I live on the north side. I, this is my everyday life. I don't need a glimpse into it. I'm appreciative for the opportunity, but is it always 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM? Do they always come to the north side? Um, it are, I, I just have many questions about that. While there are real concerns, real things that happen, I just, I have a lot of questions about that. And I also would encourage anyone who participates in a ride along to participate in a live along. Come spend that much time with someone who lives in these communities, maybe on these streets that they took you to between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM. And, and see that other side. It's not to say that what you got was one sided, but just so that you can have a complete view of community as we look at this whole topic. And finally, again, I just want to thank city staff for all of the work they put into the housing ordinance. For anybody who knows me, this is, you know, I've been very serious about that. And to the person that commented about the, the march that took place, I don't know specifically what was said, so I can't really comment to that. But, you know, as I've been pushing this anti discrimination ordinance for quite some time, I don't support discrimination. And I'll just say that. And I think that might be it. There might be something I'm, I'm forgetting. If I am, I apologize. Please make sure you mask up and take care.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't see your hand raised, Commissioner or not, so I assume it is, it was come to me at this point. A few things I do want to comment on. One, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Prado's comments related to resources to help people from losing their apartment due to non-payment of rent. There has been a moratorium on the eviction process, which is something that can be done. However, the getting in the middle of a contract, whether it's a lease or something else. And for someone like me or the commissioner, even the governor to declare that there, no rent is due, is not something that can be done at this point. So our best option is to try to direct resources as efficiently as we can in Kalamazoo. And it is the case that HRI is taking the lead on this particular activity. If they don't have enough resources, they're going to try to ramp up. But they are the nonprofit that is, is kind of running point on this, on this process. We are getting $1.3 million in the community of Kalamazoo through the CARES Act Emergency Solution Grant. And that money is to be directed to pay for rent in arrears. There's going to be some hitches with that. We don't, the check's in the mail. We don't have that money in Kalamazoo yet. So right now, those of us who are involved in that are trying to figure out, is there a way to, to bridge that lack of resource right now? And, and pay back whoever, wherever the bridging comes from. If nothing else, there's going to be letters of commitment that will be issued by HRI. Unfortunately, I think a sorry solution to the problem. But that resource is available. And just for a couple, a couple of points for people who may be familiar or have gone through this process before is that one unique difference this time is that you can go and request assistance with the notice to quit or the demand for possession for non-payment. When you receive that, it has not yet gone into the court system. And it used to be that you had to have your summons and complaint to go request those funds, but it's not necessary now. Who one wants the simplest way to get to that? So that, that work is being intentionally done and hopefully we'll be able to help all the folks that need help here in Kalamazoo County. City of Kalamazoo is already, always, already has committed another $725,000, $20,000 to that effort. Also, obviously that's just for city residents. Following up on discussions that we're generally having in the community came up tonight on people calling in and Vice Mayor and Commissioner Cunningham spoke about this. I, I do want to let people know that as the mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, I am part of the US Conference of Mayors. And as a matter of fact, a little while ago, I went to the first youth summit for the youth conference of mayors. That was before I was mayor, when our previous mayor Bobby Hopewell was unable to attend. So I've been to those gatherings. There's a new president there for the US Conference of Mayors. That is the mayor of Louisville, Mayor Greg Fisher. And just recently, he issued a request to the national level expressing support for legislation on reparations. And there was a now past congressman here in Michigan who introduced that a bill, House Bill 40, every single term, looking for a national discussion on that issue. And other folks have taken that up. US Conference of Mayors that I'm part of is now expressing a desire for that to, to be more seriously approached on the national level again. So that's going on while we also do the work that we have to do locally. I'm proud to be part of that organization as well. Just along those lines, I'm just going to suggest for reading, folks, sometimes we're, we're rolling into this idea of reparations like it's a brand new thing. And we're just hearing about it for the first time and trying to put it into context. You know, this was an idea that was actually broached very seriously with a plan associated with it back in 1863, 64 by President Abraham Lincoln. And had a rather robust plan for the idea of how, of reparations and how important that was at that time. I guess as a a person who also works in social services and a bit of a fiscal conservative, I wish that had been addressed back then, but it was not. President Abraham Lincoln was killed. That reparations program went nowhere. Things went from bad to worse, but there's been discussions for years and years and years about that idea and, and it's coming up again. 2014, Hannah House Coats brought it back up again, but for a very detailed explanation of the history, which I think is a dense and deep read, but worth reading. I am reading something right now. It was published just this year, 2020. It's called From Here to Equality. It's the title for the book. I'd recommend to anyone who has an interest and wants to have some fact based knowledge, a good historical basis for this conversation, to pick that book up. It's written by Dr. William A. Darity, who is a American economist, PhD, who graduated from MIT. And A. Kirsten Mullen, who is an American author, they wrote it together. Certainly available, you can order it from Michigan News Downtown, help dean down there. You can order it online through Amazon. I think it's definitely worth reading. If you get a copy, please get it and share it around. A discussion worthy of our time here. I would also like to pick up on the topic a little bit, just about the idea of ride alongs and and issues with traffic, you know, particularly on the north side is where I've heard about it most. And I live just a few houses down from North Street. So, you know, I hear, you know, some of the exhibition driving, that sort of thing that's going on. So we are in a very, very important and tough time as it relates to that, where we have a neighborhood that is experiencing a higher rate of, you know, driving kinds of violations and other concerns along those lines. Where at the same time, there's a great deal of consternation about asking public safety to address those things. And really feeling very mixed about do you want to invite public safety, which often has been involved over the long course of history and, and over policing and responding in ways that are not community based and appropriate. So how do we make sure this, that all residents of Kalamazoo can expect to live in safe neighborhoods and that at the same time, they're not grappling with this, this very challenging idea of how do I manage that when the policing that has occurred has for a long, long time not felt like community-based policing? How do we meld those two things? And that is something we just have to address. We just don't, we don't have any, any way to get around it. That's something we have to do. In addition, you know, this is something I've had a more focused conversation today, actually, with a strong community representative, but have thought about this over the course of time, is that we, we must move in a conscious way where we don't see neighborhoods or streets or individuals who live in our city, you know, in in terms of fear or in other kind of way. And I know that's something that's instilled in all of us in a certain way and it's hard to get around that. But we have to make sure, just as was mentioned by the Vice Mayor, that we get to know each other in neighborhoods and we, we don't take snapshots and visit neighborhoods at times when it feels like, you know, visits from outsiders and we're, we're, we're coming in and we're leaving and we're somehow feel distanced, I guess, from, from that neighborhood because of that experience. So I know these are conversations we could have much more detailed discussion about, but I think it's so, so important. One thing I've been thinking about a lot recently is that we have 263 miles of streets in the city of Kalamazoo, 263 miles. And since the Y closed, I've been getting out and walking and running, actually. Very proud of that. But anyway, had to get that in. But a lot more outside. And I have been doing that for months now and I've been running up and down streets. And I can just tell you that, that it is stark and startling to just be aware day in and day out of the notion that there are neighborhoods that have suffered from a serious lack of investment. And as a result, people who've lived in those neighborhoods have also suffered for years and years and years. And just how different it can be, you know, from one street to another, right here in Kalamazoo. It can be discouraging when you feel like it is such a big lift. How are we going to, how are we going to work through this? How are we going to get, find a way past this? This is not something that's going to change overnight, but how can we, how can we do things here, the important work in the city? That does begin to change things now, so we can actually see that there's progress being made. So I just appreciate what everybody brings to this work on the commission. And I appreciate working with, with all staff at the city of Kalamazoo, trying to grapple with these, with these issues that have been ignored too long and we have to start doing real things about it. As Commissioner Cunningham said, you know, there's an opportunity to do some symbolic thing and I, and I get all that. And I'm sure there will be things like that that we will be doing. But, but I want to, I want to back that up with, with real, real stuff that we can point to, that we can measure, that we can depend on, that we can speak to, that we can call each other out on, that we can actually witness that there are the lives are being changed. So I appreciate every one of you. Let's keep our eyes and our minds and our hearts open. Love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.